Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Michael Rossi, Chairman of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. I would like to call this regular monthly meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Mike Knudsen. Ellen Dahlgren.
I'm here.
Eddie Albarino.
Here.
Mike Florio.
Here.
Martin Jaffe. Alan Cravitz.
He's here.
He just signed in through there, yeah. Chinzia Luteri.
Yeah.
Thank you. Adam Moore. Beau Clark. Jay Mandel.
Here.
And Zach Florida.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to see Jay for Martin Jaffe and Zach for Mike Knudsen.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a forum. Let's see, minutes. So, minutes were distributed from the October meeting. Is there any corrections, questions, comments that we need to add to it? I didn't have any. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
I'll second.
Zach got the second. Okay, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Standing? Motion carries? Thank you. Chair's conference. We had an election, in case you guys didn't know about it. And as a result, we are losing three longtime members that I want to just comment on. Start with Alan Cravitz, who I've worked with since, what is it, Alan, two thousand and five? Something like that. And he's been a stalwart on the commission. Well, Mike Knudsen's here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so who can I see Zach for?
For Mark, no, Adam Moore.
Adam Moore, okay, thank you. So again, Alan's been a real stalwart and, you know, he's going to be missed. I appreciate all his service and I've found him to be a great colleague. Adam Moore is leaving us. I have to admit, when I came back from my sabbatical off the commission, I didn't know who Adam was. He's proved himself to be somebody who really cares about the town of Clinton and I've really been proud to serve with him. And then Martin Jaffe. I, again, he's somebody that I hadn't known until we met on the commission. And he has always had just great ideas. He really is working for the town. He's going to continue in some other commissions and boards. But, you know, wonderful people, all three of them. I'm wishing them the best. And I think we all owe them thanks for the service they've done to the town. Thank you. That's my comments. Let's move on to receipt of applications. The first one is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-three dash twenty-six text amendments, proposed text amendments, sections three, twelve, twenty-seven, and thirty of the Clinton zoning regulations, to bring regulations for family childcare into compliance with the Public Act twenty-three dash one forty-two. We need to receive this and schedule for a public hearing. And schedule us for a public hearing at the December eleventh meeting. Do I have a motion to do that, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to receive PZC twenty-three dash twenty-six for proposed text amendment sections three, twelve, twenty-seven, thirty-three of the Clinton zoning regulations and bring the regulations into compliance. And we have the date of public hearing, scheduled public hearing for December eleventh. Is that what you want to miss, Chairman?
That's what I need. I want to hear Abby's got something.
Just before, there's discussion on the motion. At the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this was, staff was directed to go ahead and do the advertising for the public hearing for this meeting, which was done. So it was advertised appropriately to have a public hearing this evening. If you would prefer to open and continue, it's in the commission's timeframe, so it's perfectly fine. But that was, that was part of the, part of the directive from the last meeting was to move it forward and then schedule for public hearing. That was what staff understood it to be. So, so it was advertised, if you would rather wait and discuss to see if there are perhaps additional folks who may not have gotten that memo to come in December, that's fine, too. Our reporting period, state on this matter, is December first, and as long as we're moving toward compliance with the-
We've got it on the document for tonight. I somehow missed that. Of course. Okay, so we were receiving it and having the public hearing tonight. Okay.
Yeah, it's on the, yeah.
It's on the agenda, yes.
So my apologies, was it, who was it that made the motion?
Eddie and then-
Yeah, I, we have it scheduled for the public hearing.
Right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. The next item on there, oh, good point, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just got a text from Mike, Mike Knudsen. He wants to know if anybody can see him. He signed on.
Yeah, Mike Knudsen and Alan, and Alan are here.
Well, we can't see either one of them.
Yeah, they don't have their cameras on. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries? Thank you. Okay. Next one is Planning and Zoning Commission twenty-three dash twenty-seven for Twenty-One Shore Road. This is a building, a nine-by-seven elevator shaft onto the south side of an existing house. The owner is Shorefront Corporation applicant Joe Ren. We need to receive this and it is eligible for review tonight. Okay. It looks like a site plan. Was there a CAM?
Maybe the postal site plan.
Okay. Thank you. Can somebody give me a motion to repeat? At Jay, okay, we have a second? Like? Okay, so Jay and Mike. Okay? All those in favor? Opposed? Oh, we got Mike Knudsen here. Now we can see him. Thumbs up. Okay, it passes. Okay. Public hearing, proposed text amendments to sections three, twelve, twenty-seven, and twenty-three of the Clinton zoning regulations to bring regulations for family childcare into compliance with Public Act twenty-three dash one forty-two. The applicant is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a notice of public hearing that we can have, right?
Let me pull it up.
Pull it up?
Yeah.
Okay, it'd be good to read that for us. It would be great.
I, I can read it with me.
Oh, okay, you got it? Go ahead.
Legal notice of public hearing, hybrid in the green room, invite is that, as soon. The Town of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven p.m. to consider the following. PZC twenty-three, twenty-six for proposed text amendments, sections three, twelve, twenty-seven, and thirty-three of the Clinton zoning regulations to bring regulations for family childcare into compliance with Public Act twenty-three dash one forty-two. At such a said hearing, all persons will have the right to be heard. The application correspondence are available for public inspection. You can see P D S colon slash slash Clinton C T dot org slash document center slash index slash fifteen twenty-seven. Anyone requiring special accommodation, participate in a public hearing, contact the land use office at eight six zero six three nine six one three three. Michael Rossi, Chairman, Town of Clinton Planning and Zoning Commission. And this was published on November second, twenty twenty-three, and I believe the second publication was on the ninth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that was published in the Harvard News.
Okay. Okay, so the public hearing is open. We have the report from Abby on this. Do you want to summarize?
Sure. Yeah. So, as folks are aware, on October first, twenty twenty-three, Public Act twenty-three, one forty-two went into effect. And the changes that this, this legislation included, or to effectively make sure that towns are not treating family childcares or group childcare homes, which are certain designations, by the Office of Early Childhood to the State of Connecticut, that they're not being treated any differently from single-family homes in residential areas. And so some of our regulations, there's a couple of things that need to be amended. Our definitions were not in line with the number of kids that would be permitted to be at these, these facilities, whether it's a home daycare or a larger home daycare. Our numbers were a little bit off, so we tried, so the draft in front of the commission remedies that essentially mirrors the state's definition, so that it's very clear that we are regulating sort of the same categories that they are. Other pieces, there were, some of the language of the Public Act prohibits towns from required, from requiring special exception permissions for these particular types of childcare. And so that requirement, requirement was removed both in section twelve and section twenty-seven for the table of uses. There were some parking requirements that are not, single-family homes are not subject to, so those came off for these smaller operations. It's important to note that childcare centers, the larger ones, are all still subject to the same requirements that the commission had them centered to before. So none of those site plan requirements, traffic, you know, any, anything that would be required for a larger center is still required. This is strictly for things that are sort of operating in a residence. And again, it's, it's not a consider this amendment from the state, it's a shall. And so that's why the amendment is before you. The report back, basically, December first, we have to either be compliant or have a plan for compliance that we report back to OEM and essentially, you know, tell the state how we're going to proceed with this. And then I believe the legislation said every year thereafter, so every year we'll have to make some kind of statement through Carl's office to say, let's, here's how we're complying. So, so the hope would be that if the commission is amenable to the language in front of you or similar language, if there's any minor tweaks that don't change the substance of the language, they could be considered and potentially to have an effective date of December fifteenth. So we could report back on the first to say that this is potentially moving forward.
Thank you. Were there any questions? Go ahead, Zach.
In the, the language from the state, in your summary, it said nine children. Is that what the limitation is for the residential daycare?
Right, yeah.
It say that, and you would have regulation. Any proposed regulation changers? Didn't see anywhere we'll limit the number of-
So in the, I think what we did in the definitions is essentially say a family childcare home licensed by the State of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood. So if for some reason they change that and they say now it's ten, we don't have to go back and change our regulations. So we tried to use their categories so that we're consistent going forward. And if there's a legislation change in the future that says, you know, we're upping the number of family childcare, you know, family childcare homes, you know, to fifteen kids, but now have an opportunity to regulate differently, then we might need to do an amendment at that point. But I don't foresee that being on the horizon.
I was confused by it, too, because in the tables in twenty-seven, some of the larger ones still say how many.
So the, what happened in the larger ones, so their, their daycare facilities are the, is the use that's listed in the tables. We had previously done sort of that nine, nine kid breakdown, so under nine and over nine for those two categories. So now we've eliminated the numbers for the smaller, for any of the childcares. The number that remains is fifteen for adult daycare, so we didn't do any changes to the adult pieces, because the commission hasn't discussed that and that really wasn't on the table in the legislation. So, so the number still exists for adults and for any of the childcare, it follows whatever the state's definition and threshold for a number of kids. And one of the reasons that we didn't try to do the numbers is that there are provisions in each of these different types for a certain number of days in the week or hours in the day, that you could have a certain number of kids there. So there are certain, you know, a family childcare home could have, you know, less than a certain number of children, but more could be enrolled because they may have an opportunity to go overnight. There's, there's a lot of different pieces to it. So rather than try to get those nuances into our regulations and have to change them, if the Office of Early Childhood ever did, they were just putting it in as a sort of, here's the title, but there's a designation. They hold the license from the state. And that's an important piece, too, that to be compliant with the town, they have to be licensed by the state. It's not just somebody sort of babysitting in their home, you're a licensed facility.
Okay, go ahead, Zach.
On the PDF that was attached to everything, page twelve of seventeen is like the House bill, the language you guys did. Put in two through ten for, it's like zoning regulations adopted pursuant to subsection A of this section shall not. And then one talks about this, and then two through ten is just like a bunch of different things. How do those apply for a sec?
So those are other, other provisions that have come in in recent years in legislation. So this is where they've got some pieces for temporary, some of the temporary healthcare stuff is there, minimum floor area for, for building codes. A lot of these things came in under Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine and similar, and then legislation that was happening in and around COVID. And so our regulations either address those, or if they don't, some of those items are actually in the section twenty-eight conversation that we'll have later tonight. But those are other, other pieces that are already, it wasn't changed language, it was already in the legislation. So it's not a topic of this particular change.
Got it. Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Okay. At this time, I would ask if there is anybody in the public who would like to comment on the changes to the regulations. If you are interested, when you're here, raise your hand. If you're online, just use a little hand symbol. We know you're here. Being done. We have, we do have people here, by the way. But seeing that at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve this zoning regulation change. Let me get the right language. You can just say. So the zoning regulation change, BZC twenty-three dash twenty-six, the text amendments to sections three, twelve, oh, twenty-seven, and thirty-three of the Clinton Planning and Zoning Regulations, as they will bring our regulations for family childcare into compliance with Public Act twenty-three dash one forty-two.
I'm sorry, go check the slides. Yeah, close the hearing first and then-
Oh, geez.
I'm sorry. I apologize, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did you make that motion, Mr. Chairman? I'll second it.
Okay, do I have a second? Mike, thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I gotta, I gotta wake up tonight, guys. I'm sorry. Okay, application review. First one is Planning and Zoning Application twenty-three dash twenty-four, which is a CAM application. And the applicant has requested this matter be continued through the December eleventh meeting. So I would like a motion to continue this to the twen- twelve, eleven meeting.
Continue, continue this to the December eleventh? Is that what you said? Eleven, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Okay, thank you. One second, thank you. Okay. All those in favor?
All right, aye.
Just a point of order here. Are we going to vote on twenty-three, twenty-six, because that are going to be on-
I, I believe it, it looks like it's been omitted from the agenda, and so what would need to happen is there would be, I need to vote to add that under the reviews.
Oh, my goodness, I apologize.
Oh. Okay, well, you can do that. Let's get through the three we have and then we'll do that. Okay. Next one is Planning and Zoning twenty-three dash twenty-five CAM application for twenty, for, I'm sorry, Thirty-Five Shore Road to demolish an existing house and rebuild new house, in zone regulations, penal requirements. And the owners are Michael and Sherry. Ferrari. And the agent is Greg Betis. Okay, Greg, you're on.
Okay, good evening, Greg Betis with Betis Engineering in office at Seventy Essex Street, Mystic, Connecticut. Licensed professional engineer in the State of Connecticut, representing the Ferraris, who are live locally at Blue Road currently and do a lot of building within Clinton. Been here several times before in ZBA and so forth with their projects. This is a home for the Ferraris, a new home for the Ferraris. They purchased Thirty-Five Shore Road, which is saying pretty outdated and a little bit rundown and non-thema compliant. Couple of, at least one non-informity, which was coverage. Hearing for you tonight for CAM application, for basically to demolish the existing home and rebuild it. Like I said, FEMA compliant, or like the application said, FEMA compliant. Basically, the house is in the same, same location. There is a lot going on with the flood zone lines here. AE eleven is kind of on the shore road towards the marsh. There's an AO two depth two, which is, I think, in theory, it's adjacent to a VE zone where you get wave action that kind of comes over and, and, I don't know, getting zero to one point five feet of, or up to two feet of, sort of kind of like runoff more so. So, so there is a VE twenty zone, which is on the Long Island Sound side. So in theory, you would get three feet, three-foot waves crashing at that point. And then they would roll down the embankment towards Shore Road. So that's the theory of it all. We have placed the main structure of the house in the AO two zone. And then there's a independent, structurally independent deck that's, that's in the front, and that would be actually within the VE zone, so it won't be attached to the house. So it's a roof-band deck structure that won't be attached to the house, so FEMA does allow you to do that. Their, their concern with decks is that if it's attached to the house, you get wave action. And it, there's, historically, there's, there's studies that have shown the deck would kind of pull the house down into the water. So if it's independent, they do allow decks to be within the VE zone where you don't have to bring the house into the VE zone requirements. And I'll get into the deep letter briefly. I don't want to spend a ton of time on it, but they do talk about the VE, the VE zone. So that's kind of it. There is an existing paved right-of-way that runs on the, the south west side of the property that gives access to, to a house across the street to get to the beach. We are proposing to fill that in somewhat, not, not eliminate it. Get rid of the asphalt, the, the impervious surface there. There's actually a side entrance garage on the existing house. We're getting rid of that. But we are, we are putting in the wall that runs along that property line also. And basically, what it will do is bring in basically match, almost match grades with the adjacent property. Both properties sit up a bit higher on both sides. The property to the southwest is actually in the X zone. So. And, and grades are very similar, so there's kind of a transition on all property from the X zone into, into the flood zones. We do have soulpens showing down gradient. Fun odd promotion. Have an anti-tracking pad. I think one of the comments from staff is that we actually put an anti-tracking pad on the driveway. We're going to do a circular, a circular drive. So it'd be a pervious driveway here and then turn the grass the rest of the way down. We weren't successful in the distance and the coverage. And what's still, actually, it was a common conformity and we boosted down, so it's conforming. Floor area as well within, well, within the requirement of thirty percent, or just at eight, like a half percent. So we're not, you know, we're not overly developing the site. And there's comments from people about increasing, significantly increasing floor area. I don't think we are, we're not a percentage of a half or so. You know, the setback requirements. There's stormwater, or stormwater runoff on both sides that infiltrate into the sands, the well drain soils that are out there, UCO compliant, septic system located in the front, the shore roadside. There's an existing wall along the front that are dashing, two walls, one further out and one at the bottom of the steps here. Most remain. We are about a hundred and ten feet or mean high water to the, to the deck. I think what else there would be. That is pretty much it. And we're, you know, we, it is a little bit tricky site with the way the grading was and the flood zones, but I think we're compliant, the one exception. I think we're a foot low on the house, so we had to bring that up to twenty point zero. None of the grading will change, just the first floor will be at twenty instead of nineteen. So we'll, there was comments from staff and then summarized and the conditions, which we would agree to the conditions that are outlined.
The one question that I had had to do with the grading.
Yes.
Are, are you, how much are you raising the property with the grading?
So we're matching grade here at the road. We came up ten percent to get into the circular drive. And then from there, we went a little bit steeper, but that turns into pervious, the maximum depth is about six feet.
Side effect runoff.
Actually, help runoff, because right now it's paved and it's all, none of it's going to go onto the adjacent property. Currently, it all drains at some point approximately where my finger is, where the underground infiltration is. It's positive drainage all the way out to Shore Road. And the balance is positive drainage out to the beach. Those, since we're getting rid of the asphalt, we expect to get quite a bit of infiltration into the ground. So I think it'll actually, or eliminate or reduce significantly the runoff that runs out to Shore Road. And I wouldn't expect anything more towards the beach, and then once it is, the beach sand is.
Any questions from the other commission members? Any questions from the other commissioners? Staff is prepared for, uh, some language. Uh, potential language if we're interested in approving this, that's at the end of the staff report if anybody, uh. Would like to use that or modify it, um. Uh, we've been told those conditions, uh, there were four conditions listed. Uh, Greg has indicated that they're, uh, comfortable with those conditions.
Most effort for point of clarification, um, so Deep has not weighed in on this.
They have, they have not waited until the time the staff report was written. They have since weighed in. There's fairly significant. Comment in the record concerning coastal resiliency issues.
Right.
Part of it, I think, is, is, there is, there's a recommendation, um, that, that for resilience purposes. Um, both, uh, the, the senior coastal environmental player, the coastal planner and, um, the state flood plan coordinator took a look at this one. Both recommended that, um, V E twenty constructional standards be considered. It is not a requirement in our regulation. If that deck and roof area isn't connected to the house, we don't have a requirement that it. Has to be, uh, that it has to fully meet those V E standards, which means elevating open breakaway walls, the whole, the whole nine yards. Um, you certainly, if the flood maps change, which would see level rise in other pieces, they, they will likely do so at some point. Um, you know, that's just, it's a, it's a sort of put on notice for, for the owner. That there may be a time when the flood plane does reach this, this particular house, because it's so close. Um, so it's something to just be aware of. So the minimum elevation requirement for the house, provided that the deck and other structure. Is fully detached is twenty, based on the, the A O zone plus three. But, uh, the recommendation was for that resilience piece. There's also some other, other elements, um, you know, relative to, again, as, as, um. Greg was saying, you know, floor area and then that kind of stuff, which are again, there's policy recommendations that have not been codified. So the staff report is sort of written on, well, here is sort of the law, um, that we have adopted, and then there's recommendations to, to go beyond that. I think it's important to clarify. Um, you know, the difference between the architectural plans and the site plan and just make sure that. Um, you know, what is, so it sounds as though it's a, the roof structure itself will be detached, but it looked as though there were doors leading out onto that deck. From the second floor, is that the upper floor?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that, I mean, so the construction of that, when it gets to the building official, there would need to be verification that it is fundamentally. Detached, otherwise, if a portion of a structure is, is in flood zone, everything is, and it has to be to be E standard, which we've. The V F, the, you know, V F equals one, so twenty-one feet for the lowest structural member, horizontal structural member, um, plus. You know, breakaway walls and, and the ability for water to pass. So, so it is important that that stay detached under current regulations. The plan does not address future potential conditions relative to resiliency.
And there's no mention of any impact on sediment control or erosion or.
So the plans have.
Both the wetlands and.
Well, the, the plans have silt fence, um, there's already a single family home on the property, and so. So one of the things that would need to happen is, is does with any plan or any construction that goes forward, is that Kathy would go out, inspect the sediment erosion controls. It's one of the reasons that we talked about adding another track pad in so that things don't get down off of the road, um.
You'd, you'd like to look in the, um, the link that's, um, provided, the, um, the letter from Marcie Bount is there.
Okay.
If you haven't had a chance to read it, it's, uh, L W R D comments received on eleven seven twenty-three, four thirty-five shore road. So, um. If anyone. See, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Okay.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
I'm sorry, Tenzia, are you trying to use your cell phone?
Yes, I can.
I, I wouldn't recommend using a cell phone, at least when you're trying to look up the documents. A tablet, yes, but cell phones, yeah.
Does anybody want to read it?
No, I don't think, uh, but give, give her a moment to.
Um. Go ahead, go ahead. Um, you, you responded, uh, with stuff about the dry egress point, I just wondered. How that would apply in this scenario, and it's slowing downwards, the lot altogether, so. There's no way to do that, or?
Well, I think it's a big picture thing, um, a lot of Shore Road just doesn't have dry ingress. We're fortunate, a little bit fortunate, as long as, like, it's neighborly. The X zone is here, so we actually have unofficial dry egress onto this property. And then that X zone expands, uh, pretty well to the southwest, um. I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that, that. In dry egress, it's applicable to a replacement, single family home, but at least we have some, we have a little bit of some.
Just giving low indication by all.
Yeah, just the version of the proposed, uh, tool that I have. Uh. Appears to be prior to the, uh, revision, please, nine to the twenty-eight. You're more recent version of it?
I don't believe we, we have received a more recent plan, and so the condition was written as though the plan had not changed.
So there isn't having to be a long, a long reason.
Right.
So this is the, uh, this is, this is, this is the wording.
Well, you didn't put it out there and then we even discussed it.
I'll, I'll put motion on it.
Okay.
All right, I move to approve, uh, application P C, P C twenty-three dash twenty-five for a coastal site plan at thirty-five shore road. Connecticut, I've shown on lines entitled, quote, site plan of thirty-five shore road. Connecticut, prepared for Emperor Development LLC, unquote, prepared by Fedis and Superior LLC. And this date is September twentieth, twenty twenty-three, revised to, uh, October fifth, twenty twenty-three. With the following conditions, prior to the start of work and final elevation, the house will be revised to elevation twenty. Should the applicant revise plans to connect structures within FEMA zone V E twenty, the house. FEMA construction standards for the V E zone elevation twenty shall be required for the entire structure. Two, prior to start of work plan, should be revised, uh, details for the track pads. Three, regen seven, full shall be installed around the middle of the work and be inspected and approved by the Northern Department Office of Mariposa. Four, instructed installation degree management, which will over the end of the land with, I, I don't know. Uh, and we doubt the following findings in fact, as condition, one of the as condition pro- project would quote from screen. And future water dependent development actually to the proposed application as condition is considered with D G in a section. Putting through A dash ninety-two.
Okay.
All right, now that needs to be updated because apparently there is now a plan with the.
There is, there is no new plan.
Okay, do we have a second before we do the next discussion? One second. Okay, now we can discuss it.
Right.
And, um, the June.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'll ask if there was a plan.
Okay, so there is no new plan.
There is no new plan. The plan that is in the records and is dated in the motion that you just.
Okay, as they.
Read.
Those recent west revise on the fifth of October, okay, so we need the condition that it revised to shed twenty, okay.
Okay, um. One of the things that. Struck me was, was. Um, has to deal with how long it would take to do this construction and, you know. Timing in terms of, you know, how do you control for storm damage? Making it worse if you're in the middle of demolishing this. You, uh, did you thought of that? I mean, even I, I don't know that we have this in the regulations. It's just one of my.
Yeah, well, I mean, we always kind of think of constructability and so forth, um, but. So we show the silt fence, uh, located about where my scale is.
Okay.
Um, so there's, and the coastal jurisdiction line is three point four and then meet high waters. Uh, elevation one point nine nine, uh. It is about, I would say eighty plus feet from, you know, our, our silt fence line. Um, there is a, there is one wall here that we're not touching, uh, there's another wall. Here that's actually just behind the silt fence, um. And the existing house is back basically where the proposed house is going, uh, so we're always. I think we have one plenty of room, um, with today's forecasting, we know there's a storm coming, uh, it's, I think. I'm not sure, Mike is here, who's the owner and builder, um, I think he's going to start right away. Uh, so it's kind of past hurricane season, uh, we would expect to be. Secure early spring with a foundation and start building, um, I.
That's your question, Anne.
Yeah, we really don't perceive any issues with this start time, um. And, and concerned and so on, so I mean, if, if a storm come.
Well, storms go.
We don't, we don't want the damage either. We don't want, you know, uh, lumber floating away or anything like that, so everything would be secured. Uh, any equipment that had potential for, for flooding would, would get moved away, like. We would definitely be on top of it, and again, with the forecasting today, we have several days notice, um, in order to do that.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussions, questions?
Right, Greg, you were saying that the second floor deck is going to be detached from the house.
It's structurally independent, so like ass, like a breakaway wall.
What's that gonna happen?
Uh, there would be, uh, columns, it'd basically be a table kind of pushed up against the house.
So there would be steel columns, wood columns?
Uh, would believe there's steel. I don't think we did the structural deny yet, um. We just, I mean, it's not going to be wood.
Yeah.
It, it's going to be either concrete piers, uh, and steel, um. Independent, again, independent of, of the house's foundation and structure.
Okay.
We've done it before, I mean.
So you're usually on the peacled pile and pin them down and then put concrete on top of that to build piers, something like that?
If, if peacles are needed, like the soils are pretty good there, so typically it would just be a, but, uh, go. A modified sound tube, whether it was square or, or round. Um, but it would appear like the layman, but if you're standing, looking from here to the parking lot, you wouldn't. You wouldn't see the, the detachment.
Right, well, it's kind of close enough where you step out.
Right on, like. Yes.
Yeah.
You gotta jump.
Yeah.
From the door to the deck.
Yeah, I get it, I understand.
Yeah, but we're not yet. It is a, they're allowed in practice.
Yeah.
So I think my concern is whether or not it's a FEMA allowed practice. That it's being structurally detached to avoid the V twenty FEMA requirements. And that's my concern, is that we're, you're, this is being built the way it's being built, so that those requirements don't have to be met. But we're not taking into consideration building this, that it isn't a very dangerous flood zone. And that we are not predicting for water levels rising, which we know that they are going to, uh, and this is just a. It's not even a band-aid, it's a, it's a workaround to have a structure be built. That is not sound for, for people who are on board for wildlife, and that is. The. Because that's something that we should be doing, that we should be protecting, right, for the C M M.
I don't think I agree with what you're saying, though. I've been building for forty years, we've done before, where we've built stuff off the house, so it's not attached to the house, so it's not uncommon.
Well, it, it's fine if it's not uncommon, but the point is, is that it's, I believe it's being done. It seems as if it's being done. Deep, deep seems as if it's being done to avoid a V E twenty FEMA requirement.
Well, true.
Yeah, in a very dangerous zone.
For telling you can't do it. Where does it say you can't do it?
Not saying you can't do it, but it's, it's being done to avoid. Yeah, but the C C M A flood hazard policy is to minimize threats to life and property. And I don't think that avoiding lifting up a property to the highest of FEMA standards. Is in alignment with that, to minimize threats to life and property. It's deep as said several times in the report that this is very dangerous.
But they give the warning that it's stated for the side that it can't be done.
And our job as commissioners is to determine if this is detrimental and dangerous. Within our policies and our standards and our regulations.
Good.
Of course, it's gonna. Make it as easy as possible to get the deck up there and to rebuild it, close to. With these, the rules for the city.
I don't think it's easy. I think it's probably going to cost ten times more than, than, so in a regular.
Yeah, of course, regular deck, you just pull, to the side of the house, you put the.
Post up, I think you use concrete or steel to build this structure, so it's not attached to the house.
No, no, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and obviously, if you're gonna. Build the property and you want to put a deck on it, and it's the easier way of doing it, so you don't take the steps to do it.
Well, I mean, what, what I believe again is the point is that, um. If it was at, um. The, if it met the standards, um, for V E zone. Instead, you know, all the way across, then it would be much safer, is what you're.
Yeah, that's what I, that's my, um.
That's the point you made.
So the plan has, is, is not including the FEMA handoff. It's still at the nineteen feet, is that?
No, it's twenty.
It is.
The condition made of.
The condition, okay, that made it twenty, but in order to be, to be twenties, it has to be twenty-one feet, is that?
Lowest horizontal member of that, that.
Has to be twenty-one, so that it's not meeting that current, is what I'm.
The deck would have to, but the, but the other.
Right.
Yeah, so we did look at, uh, you know, we had to be at, the floor would have to be at least twenty, probably twenty-two, lowest horizontal member. Twenty, so we'd have to raise it another couple of feet. That's probably not the driving force for us, uh. So it's, it's pretty straightforward when you have a, a relatively flat. Topography where waves come in and they break away the walls and it goes underneath the house. In this case, you have. Um. On the south. Or northeast side, this, this side, uh, thirty-seven shore road, you have soil up to elevation seventeen already. So to do piers and breakaway walls, breakaway wall would only be, like, it's just an oddball. Construction process, and I think the V E, the wave zone. Like, the line is in front of the house, waves are breaking there, and then the runoff. Of, in the A O two is only a couple of feet deep and running, so it's, it's. The site is not as conducive to V E construction as. As kind of open to the, open to the ocean or open to, to Long Island Sound. If we were building in front of that line, yes, you would want to put it on piers and let the breakaway walls and the water would go right underneath it. But it. Site and the topography of not only our site, but the adjacent properties, it's just not conducive to a V E. Um, construction, so.
Any further discussion?
I'll just make one, I'd just like to.
Go ahead.
One other note, while the design may, may need the regulatory requirements. It is not a design looking towards the future of climate change. That's something that we really should take into consideration, uh, and that FEMA is going to be remapping their coastal areas in the coming years. And so that, those. Might change as well. In coming years, it could be, you know, one, two years. So that is coming down the bank as well, so that should be considered.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, we have a motion on the floor, um, I would like, because I think there's going to be, um. Disagreement here, I would like to have this be a roll call vote.
Mike Knudsen?
Aye.
Ellen Dahlgren, just to clarify, the aye vote is the vote to approve, is it correct? Okay.
Correct.
Correct.
Eddie Alberino?
Aye.
Mike Florio?
Aye.
Alan Cravitz?
No.
Chenzia Latiri?
No.
Jay Mandel?
Aye.
And Zach Ford?
Is this to include the October, uh, newest plan?
And and the condition that be raised at nine to twenty?
Aye.
Okay, the uh, motion carries, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Um. The next item is uh, planning and zoning commission twenty-three dash twenty-seven, twenty-one tour road. Uh, building a nine by seven. For uh, elevator shaft addition onto the south side and the just the house. Uh, the Shorefront Corporation applicant Joe Ren, is there an agent or applicant here tonight?
Uh, yes, Joe Ren, professional engineer, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Great, I hope all everyone is well, uh, make this one short and sweet. Um, have the site plan up on the screen here. Um, the only thing that is being proposed uh, external to this house is the. Nine by seven uh, proposed elevator shaft on the south side. It's about thirty-eight feet from the property line. Um, it is not in a flood zone. Fact it's fifty-two feet away from the flood zone line, as you could see on the plan. Um, and uh, it's about. One hundred and sixteen feet from the coastal jurisdiction line, as you can see here, elevation three point four. Uh, it is just inside one hundred feet from the coastal resource, which is the beach located. Uh, on this side of the house here where my cursor is. Um, the opposite side, of course, is Shore Road. And um, that's it, sixty-three square feet, uh, it's not in the flood zone. It's close to a hundred feet away from a coastal resource, we did get a BP letter that was favorable. Uh, saying that there would be um negligible uh, impact on resources. Um, so with that, if you have any questions, um, I could try to answer them.
Um, I didn't have any questions on this application. Right? Um, from the commission, any discussions in the commission? No? Okay, um. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve that there is recommended language again from the staff for us. It has no conditions.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I I have one question, sorry.
Go ahead.
All right, so, does this have a a generator backup if people are inside? At, you know, fire department has access to everything in there, Joe?
Uh, I do not know the answer to that question, that's more of a building. Fire safety code question, which would be part of the building permit process.
Okay.
Uh, there is no proposed generator, I'm not sure if there is an existing.
Well, if they lose, the only reason I'm asking, Joe, if they if they lost power and it's, there's people in there um.
Correct, yeah, that that would be part of the the building permit, whatever required by the building code.
Okay.
To that or fire code would all have to be implemented as part of the building permit, otherwise they wouldn't be able to construct it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Welcome.
Do we have uh?
I'm moving through that. BP twenty-three dash twenty-seven for coastal site plan at twenty-one shore road, Connecticut, as shown on plans. Uh, entitled property survey, for prepared for the shorefront corporation. Location twenty-one shore road, Connecticut, I'm prepared by Robert C. Simone, licensed surveyor, dated twenty-seven September two oh two three, twenty twenty-three, and revised through uh, sixth October twenty twenty. And uh, adopt the following findings, that one, the project incorporates three measures to mitigate natural adverse impacts. To coastal resources and future water dependent development activity, two, the proposed application is consistent with CBS effect. Twenty-two A dash ninety-two.
Okay, thank you. Like, thank you. Okay, um, any discussion in the turn? In that case, on this one, I'll just do uh, all those in favor.
Aye.
Close. Danny? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all, have a great night.
Take care, buddy.
Okay, the next one is I would like to ask uh, for a motion to add. Uh, PZC twenty-three dash twenty-six, the proposed text amendment. That we closed the public hearing on tonight, to the uh, agenda as item sixteen.
So moved.
Okay, thank you. Um. Any discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
That has to be a picture.
It doesn't. But it was.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, um, okay, so now we're to. Um. Planning and zoning commission twenty-three dash twenty-six, the public hearing is closed on this. Uh, there was uh, very little uh, discussion. Does anybody have um? Uh. Anything they wanna say or any uh, motion that they want to consider for this?
I like, I'd just like to make a motion to approve.
The only thing that we would need as part of the motion is a proposed effective date, um, I believe December fifteenth would give us enough time to to. Get through the appeal period and then.
Yeah, and I think it should also say, uh, to make it consistent with uh. The uh, state language PA twenty-three dash forty-two.
And you said twelve fifteen?
Twelve fifteen.
Yeah, okay, so I make a motion to. Approve the technical amendments to section three twelve, twenty-seven and thirty-three of the zoning regulations. To bring, regulations for family. Top here, into compliance with and consistent with uh, State Public Act twenty-three dash one forty-two. Um, on December twelve fifteen.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Thank, thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, opposed? Danny, the motion carries, thank you. Um, okay, now we're to section seven, we have several administrative items tonight. Um, and I will uh. Uh, start with the one, the written review and discussion of potential amendments to section twenty-eight. Um, accessory use to, let me find my notes. Um, we have a staff report to talk that deals extensively with section twenty-eight. Um, the most important part of this for me is the idea of grouping these into. Portions to to tackle in public hearings. Um. The personally, I really like the uh, suggestion to break it into three groups. Okay, which would be the general revisions, off-street parking, animals and agriculture is one group. Uh, swimming pool, structure, storage and display as next. And then commercial residential uses is the third, and sort of try to hit this in three, three different uh, months. Okay. Um, with that in mind. Um. I would prefer that we only discuss tonight the revisions to uh, that first deck. Which is pages uh, twenty-eight zero one through twenty-eight zero three, the top half of twenty-eight zero three. Um. Because if we try to do all of it tonight, we'll be here forever. So I'd like to, I think that we do this one, try to get it so we feel we're comfortable and can schedule it for a public hearing. Uh, and try to do that tonight if possible, if not, I mean, if it. If we're not in agreement, that's fine, but you know, I think that's our goal to have for this. Um, are there any concerned about that approach? Okay. Thank you, so with that, um. Uh, again, the first part of that is uh, the general revisions. Uh, for example, the change of the title of the, the uh. Would help if I got on the right one. So the first is the change in the title. Okay, from uh, accessory uses, home occupations and alternate energy systems to just accessory uses. Um, we also have changes. There are general changes in uh, the definition of an accessory use. Um. Actually, many of that is, accessory use shall be accessory only to permitted use. Accessory use shall not be allowed without the establishment of a permitted use, so. Um, is added text. Um. Off-street parking for non-commercial vehicles is permitted as a right was added. Um, and then off-street parking for up to two trailers having beds under twelve feet in length is permitted as. A right was added. Um. In non-residential zones, accessory storage, did I miss one there? No, accessory storage. Of one commercial vehicle exceeding one and one half ton is permitted as a right. And commercial vehicles may be permitted. Uh, provided, and then there's the um. For off-street parking, there is, there are conditions on when you can have uh. Commercial vehicles store or off-site. Missing, I'm sorry, Ellen, you're trying to read up for me.
Well. It's all right.
Yeah, okay. You're not familiar with it, okay.
The only change that was made in this language to previous versions of the commission and regulations committee has seen. Was based on last month's discussion to make sure that it was clear that if a vehicle has rear dual axles, for those six-wheel vehicles where. By weight, um, so if somebody's got their welding rig that's coming home and it meets the size provisions, we wanted to make sure I didn't meet a prohibition on on. It was restricted to only two axles before, so this says, if you've got a rear dual axle, that you've got a dualy because you've got weight in the back. For whatever materials you're hauling or or equipment that you're using, that's still permissible, and so when Kathy goes out to do her measurements. She'd be measuring from the front to the to the farthest rear, and that would be the the measurements taken.
Okay, and that addressed uh, Eddie's concern?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, off-street parking, I think I would actually did that. Um. And then the last part of that was um, animals and agriculture, which is down the page. And I didn't think there was any changes from what we had last month there.
No, no, it just specified what's allowed by right versus by zoning permit versus by any kind of permitting, um. Which in this case, there there would be none, all be by right or by special permit, and this is where we add illegal companion animals for our smaller breeds.
Right.
Okay, and just a uh, question, an informational question here, we actually have this on the floor as an amendment. Or as a motion, excuse me, uh, it will be within um. You know, Robert, it's supposed to propose an amendment, propose an amendment to the motion to approve. Uh, that uh, addresses language, I mean.
Oh, you can address the language now.
Yeah, well, I I'm probably gonna be the only person who wants to make this motion and I'll probably vote it down, but I did, I did wanna be on.
Well, why don't you tell us with the.
Like, I I don't think that for these oddball companion animals, that the size is the only issue. I I think that we need to address the issue of odor with small goats. And that's uh, that allowing male goats in residential areas is just not going to be. Yeah, I I think it's a very bad idea. Okay, I mean, I don't know whether anybody else would ever smell the billy goat, but maybe, maybe that's why people are in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you.
I sure wouldn't wanna.
Some of these fish, they don't thrive as one, they need a pair.
Really?
So yes, we've had people come in and they have these small animals and they just need a companion, go thrive. You can't have. No, the animal needs a companion. Yeah, so if you have certain big goats and things like that, they great too, and they don't survive. They need, they need a pair.
Okay.
But not next door, maybe.
So the animal need a companion.
They need to be in a pair. It's in the, it's in this, we looked this up on agricultural rights for the state, they need a pair, they need to come in pairs.
I just learned so.
Yeah, they don't, they don't do well alone, yeah.
An animal. Right, so.
Okay, um, any further discussion then? Okay, what I would like to do, then if you uh, would like to make a motion, uh. Ellen and.
No, no, let somebody else do this.
Do we do this one?
Yeah.
Okay, um, what I would like is a motion to, wait, I have to get my language, I had. I knew what I wanted to say. Okay, I would like to uh, have someone uh, entertain a motion to. Um. Then, section twenty-eight point one. Point one through section uh, twenty-eight point one point four G. As uh, edited in these um. Revision, proposed revision to the public for a public hearing. Uh, to be held on December, the uh, December eleventh. Um. No, no, I was giving you the language.
Just so.
Then, okay, so. We got, we got it for uh, moving second, okay, um, discussion.
Clarify.
Yeah.
So it does say that the livestock shall be kept in a building standard enclosure.
Yeah.
To dress, maybe. Does not belong to you. Or volume sounds.
Okay. Any other uh, discussion? Okay, those in favor of the cutting the public hearing? Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you very much. Um. Moving on, the next one I had, I gotta get my notes back in order to learn. Okay, um, we need to have appointments to uh, both River Cog. Um. Well, I thought there were two things we need to have.
Uh, the first one is, is a recommendation for an appointment to River Cog Regional Planning Commission, um, which Martin had been previously filling that role. And um, we we need to be represented, I believe it. It gets recommended out of planning and zoning commission for final approval by the town council, is my understanding of how that works, um, mechanic, mechanics of it, but but the name would need to be put up. And then um, we still, so Martin had also been sort of doing unofficial double duty. And then, um, we still, so Martin had also been sort of doing unofficial double duty, uh, Coast Resiliency Task Force. He's staying on that as a member of the Harbor Management Commission, um, but there's no official planning and zoning member that is, is up for that group, so. It's a question to see about it previously, but it was, it was not something that folks had time or availability for. Um, certainly if there's stuff this commission needs to review, we'll continue to bring it back and I can do that point of contact to, to make that happen. But it would be great to have somebody, um, be able to participate.
Would it make sense to wait till next month? Can we have our new members, uh, sworn in? Whoever you want.
To do the coastal resiliency.
You would like to do that?
Yeah, if we need somebody.
Yes, that would be great, okay? Thank you. Um. If nobody's able to do this now, we can wait till next month. I would like you to think about, I mean, for the Coast, uh, River Cog. Unless somebody here is interested in the River Cog. Um, how often do they need it? It was monthly?
Monthly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, cause Alan, you used to do that, right?
I still do.
Oh.
It's, it's typically in an evening meeting, um, and, um, from the, yeah, it's, it's. What, Alan, are they, are they still doing it hybrid?
Uh. Yes.
When is the call? I'm sorry, I did not hear about her.
The, the meetings are hybrid, so.
No, for what?
Oh, this is for River Cog.
Oh, yeah, so it's the Regional Planning Commission, yeah.
Resiliency to.
Right, right. We, we did B and F together, basically.
Okay.
Okay.
So if folks need to think about it, or if we can do a little write-up and send it around to everybody, that would be fine, too.
That would be good. I think a write-up so we can get the, get all the new members, or the two. We have two truly new members and two moving up from alternate to whole membership, so. We'll have to make sure to let, um. Uh. Lawrence know that as an alternate, he's allowed to be our River Cog, right?
Been here.
We can vote a minute right now.
Mike? Mike?
Yeah.
Uh, we've always, we, we've always had a, um. Two people assigned to the Regional Planning Commission. Uh, only one can be seated, but we've had an alternate.
Okay. That way you've got a backup.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So we'll make sure that's in there. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, okay, let's move to the budget. Um, and the plan of conservation development funding request. Um, I noticed we left chairs out of this, but we've got, you know, company chair.
I will, I will make a separate capital request of you.
We gotta get chairs, come on.
Twelve, twelve by about two hundred each. Here's the numbers.
Yeah.
There are just enough spinny chairs for the town council, so, yeah. What happened is we have to sort of buy seniority or have a way of divvying up the company chairs, but, uh, you know.
Can't we buy a dozen chairs?
We don't have it as a budget, we would have to. Which I'm happy to put in, I'm, I'm happy to put in.
Well, let, let's deal with the more important one, which is the, uh. Plan of conservation development budget request, and I believe. For that, but that moved. I had it somewhere, because I believe that was, um, an additional, uh, forty.
Yes, so last year requested Capes' is capital money, so that money carries over year over year until we're ready to start the project. The idea group via July one twenty-five to have a full eighty thousand to be able to be prepared by the end of, of this coming fiscal year. So that on July one, we're ready to hit the ground with an RFP for consulting services, so that, so the money would, would be the full pot of eighty thousand if we were approved. Would come available July one, and then since we are in our, you know, it's a ten-year cycle for our P O C D. Ours was done in twenty fifteen, so twenty twenty-five, this is our year, um, so we want to make sure that. Um, if July one of twenty twenty-four, we get started with the intent that by the, but before the end of twenty twenty-five, we would have a plan ready to perform for adoption.
And so last year we had put in the first half of this, so it was, uh, budgeted and planned for. Um. This is, you know, in my view, something that's really critical for us to do properly. Um. Not to talk ill of the. I don't want to say dead, but the, talk ill of our, uh, you know. Pre, the prior iteration. We tried to do it on the cheap and it shows. Okay, um.
The massive, the ones before that.
Yeah. Well, the one before that we did without any kind of outside help, we did it ourselves. Um, and I, I, no, because I did a lot of that and voted Alan and, um, so. You know, that one was, it was the best we could do, but we're all, uh, amateurs. So we want to do this one right, we want it to be something that really reflects what the town wants and needs. And so. I think this is a critical request and, um, I am asking all of you to. Uh, support this, then, you know, I really, I really hope that for.
We need a resolution to your motion?
Yes, we do.
If you get a motion, so I can bring it forward. So I'm looking to Robert, request forty thousand dollars in the, uh, upcoming budget, uh, to support the, um. Engagement of a consultant to, um, uh, the credit revision for the final conservation development for year twenty twenty-five.
A second.
Is that, thank you. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, opposed? Danny, motion carries, thank you very much, everyone. Um. We have distributed to us the draft annual report. Um, I have not had a chance to look it over, I apologize. Um.
I could just draw your attention, but I, I was a little impressed, frankly, though. Cause, um, with our new system that we have with Open Go, we're tracking more of the permits that I approved, so. I see for substantial improvement, I did three hundred and seventy-six, zoning was a hundred and two, reviews for wetlands was thirty-nine. The regular zoning permits was a hundred and forty-two and I had a hundred and sixteen complaints. So it's, it's been busy.
Yeah. That is good, it breaks it down, which means you're much better.
We can run reports with the new system really nicely, and the other thing that's great about it is, um, it's tagging. When the building permits come in, if there's any flood on the property at all, it comes to me for substantially, we make a deal. So there's a more thorough check, um, if somebody's, you know, hitting that fifty percent to make sure that there's flood compliant, there's, there's ice on it now.
That's wonderful, thank you. Any questions or comments on the report? Yeah, I don't believe we need a motion to accept this, well.
No, we'll, we'll go ahead and submit, you can do it by consensus or, or just direct us to consensus, or if there's any changes that you want to make or sit with it and, and. I would for, um, for December, it's, it's really up to you. This kind of captures, I, I notice the annual reports generally are, are fairly short or short, so.
Yeah, I, last year, I think I wrote it.
You did, this paragraph at the top is what you're.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they, they are short. Um. Cause I don't write long stuff. But anyway.
I'm looking to approve the, uh, um, annual report as drafted and, uh, support its submission as part of our. Report.
Okay. I think. Okay, Mike, right? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? None? Okay, thank you, everyone. Um, draft calendar for next year, did we, I didn't, I didn't see it.
You came out of my email, you pulled up.
Okay, let me.
I have a hard copy of it.
And we do take into account holidays, due holidays and any, you know, other.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry, I somehow missed.
I literally have one paper copy, I'm sorry, cause I'm not signed into remotely. Um.
Just read off the data.
Uh, regular meeting, it would be January eighth, that would be, uh, P Z C and Aquifer. Uh, February twelfth of twenty twenty-four. Uh, March eleventh, twenty twenty-four. April eighth would be, uh, twenty twenty-four would be P Z C and Aquifer. May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, June tenth, twenty twenty-four. July eighth, twenty twenty-four, P Z C and Aquifer. August twelfth, twenty twenty-four, September ninth, twenty twenty-four. October seventh, twenty twenty-four would be P Z C and Aquifer.
Wait a second, what? So that wouldn't even.
Because that was a holiday, because there's a holiday. Um, uh, a holiday falls, if I'm not mistaken, on the second, uh, Monday.
So we're having it a week early.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that happens the same as, and the same will happen in November. November, uh, fourth, and that's also due to holidays. Uh, so October seventh would be for P Z C and Aquifer, November fourth for P Z C. And then December ninth, which is regular.
Regular.
Uh, and then January thirteenth, twenty twenty-fifth would be P Z C and Aquifer.
Okay.
And then November fourth will probably have to go to the, um, Rose Room, because I imagine they'll be setting up for voting here the next one day.
Okay. Okay.
You can email those out, right, Christie?
I, yes, they were included in the email, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, do we have a motion to accept the, uh, draft calendar for next year?
Hi, I'd like to make a motion to accept it.
Thank you. You got a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Danny, motion carries. Um, I think we're to adjournment.
Okay, we, uh, point of order, Mr. Chairman, uh, Chris, um. Abby, are we work, we still working on, when we gonna talk about the other things? Your swimming pools and stuff, when did you say?
So, uh, my, my, so my understanding is that we'll prepare the actual public hearing for the first items and then under administrative items, we can keep the next sections. As an open item under.
Right, so we're gonna do that one next month. Well, that, that item is part of the set for next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, problem hearing you guys, so, appreciate it.
No problem, take care. Okay, we now, uh, we need a motion to adjourn, was there one made?
So moved.
Those that you got it?
So.
All, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Twenty-three. And you can stop the recording.